Are you ready? Call this meeting to order. This is the council workshop on November twenty-fifth, twentieth, twenty-five. It's three o'clock. Councilman Vasquez, you lead us in prayer.
Yes.
Please stand if you're able.
Please join me in a moment of prayer. First of all, Heavenly Father, remind us all that this, that every day is a day of Thanksgiving, and remind those of us here gathered here today that we need to be mindful of those that are less fortunate than we, and we ask, Father God, that you will provide for them whatever their needs are. Heavenly Father, as a new day starts, we thank you for life and the chance to begin anew. Fill our hearts with hope, strength, and trust in your plan for us. Help us to let go of yesterday's worries and help us face today with faith. Guide our steps and grant us wisdom. Let us spread love and kindness shining a light for others. Lord, we give this moment to you. Lead us on your path and let every moment move us closer to your purpose. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, let's move to agenda item number three. Discuss the Odessa Development Corporation and Tiny Footprints LLC facade and infrastructure performance agreement. Mr. Butan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and happy Thanksgiving to you in advance. You have before you a, an agreement with Dr. Hector Garcia, operating as Tiny Footprints. Dr. Garcia has a limited pediatric practice in Midland, plans on opening a fully operational pediatric clinic in Odessa at 310 Dotsey, which formerly was, formerly was the Evans Pharmacy Facility. Again, this is coming under, this agreement is being presented to you under the facade and infrastructure grant program that has, I think, in many, many ways improved downtown Odessa, and it falls within, this, this property falls within downtown Odessa. There, he's going to spend over $225,000 for facade and infrastructure improvements. He qualifies for $25,000 in facade grant and $66,312.50 in infrastructure grant for a little over $91,000. Again, I think this is another example of how we have been able to improve not only the looks but the functionality of our downtown business facilities. And again, hopefully we'll be able to move this on down, the newly added portion of South Grant to the interstate. So I would, I'll be presenting to you at your next meeting approval of this, of this agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, David. Gentlemen, any questions?
Yes.
Greg.
Did we get the contracts for these cleaned up so that it, you know, like Dr. Kiroz had some work requirements in his just for the facade grant and that delayed his payment? And, you know, just the kind of traps that we fell in that it took over a year to get him paid?
Should be simple and straightforward. We've worked, and thanks in, in, in large part to what's happening and within the finance department and how they're processing these at this time.
Okay.
And, and I don't want to understate the involvement of the Economic Development Department of the Chamber and Tom's coordinating efforts in that regard, too.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we look forward to seeing you. Thanks, David. But don't move a muscle because agenda item four says discuss ODC and UTPB performance agreement.
This is another agreement that we are bringing before you that aims at improving our workforce. We think that's an area that we've begun more emphasis than the last two or three years. UTPB is beginning a civil engineering program, and we believe that this program will turn out on a, a, a number of qualified civil engineers, and those are really good, we know those are really good jobs, really great parts of our labor force. They're required to, they'll start out with ten students to graduate and, and ultimately that number ratchets up to sixty over five years. We're, they've asked us for $2 million and they're planning on spending over $6 million to get this program going. Didn't realize I had that kind of effect, but.
The mayor couldn't hear you anyway.
The, uh, we're, we are, we are anticipating Midland Development Corporation contributing $2 million likewise. This is another example of how the two development corporations have been able to work together financially to, I think, push things forward economically for our, for our region. We've, we've done it in the past. One of the best examples is the pledges that we've made with regard to text doc programs where we've bought, bought those down. I know we've had some discussions about those and whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but they've been very successful in, in a number of projects and securing those and in making those happen quicker. And, and we've done that with MDC with, with a like program. So this is another example of that. I don't know if you have any questions with regard to that. Dr. Woodley is here if you need any technical information with regard to the engineering program, but we think this is really a, really a nice program to have.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can tie this into getting some interns on this civil engineering into the city while they can do some training and stuff, too? That could be a big help to this city. If we're going to donate $2 million, we should be getting something else in return for our money, too. We could get help where we need help at, and that's in our civil engineering department with our engineers here. Does that make sense?
We're always open to any kind of internship programs, whether it's with UTPBs on the engineering side or the master of public administration side. There are so many opportunities for, for these internships. That's, that's how I started my career was with an internship, right, with the City of Allen, Texas. So I believe in that pipeline and I can certainly work with both Odessa College and UTPB to try and create that internship program down the road.
Yeah, I think one thing I think Councilman Hania's mentioned before is that we all need help. Odessa needs help and using both the leverage we have and the, and the programs we have with UTPB and Odessa College. We'd like to grow them and keep them here. If we can get them hooked into a workforce here and get them experienced, get them to know people, know the, what's going on, I think we believe they would be more likely to stay here after graduation. And so obviously this area, this state, needs engineers, but we want them to stay here if all possible. So I think anything we can do, Dr. Woodley, that would, I guess the synergy between UTPB and the city or, and I guess this don't, we don't want to cut off the county or anyone else, but anytime they can get experience, real world experience, add to their resume and body of work and as well as, you know, help them develop as an individual and as, and as an engineer, I think it's fantastic. I love this program. I think it's a fabulous idea. We appreciate you bringing it to us. Do you have any other questions for David? It'll be on, it'll be on next council meetings.
Okay, I can at least give a thought there. I don't know that we've ever written into an agreement a requirement like that. I know the intention of this program, helping this program, is that we know that if they run through UTPB, the likelihood, there's a lot more likelihood that they're going to stay here and add to our workforce. From a legal perspective, I don't know, I don't know how that, that could happen. I'm not, I don't necessarily want to speak for Dr. Woodley, but I would be shocked if she wasn't interested in trying to facilitate some of those civil engineering students to fulfill some program here that we have at the city in order to help. I, I think I'd be shocked if she, if she wasn't interested in doing that. I don't, I don't know exactly how that might happen, but we can certainly look at that.
Well, the mayor just might point out, Dr. Woodley's right behind you, and I'd love to ride her up to the podium to help shed some light on maybe what they've thought of, that they could do or might be able to do.
Well, thank you for the question. You know, we have a very extensive internship program. And so absolutely, all of our students are, you know, encouraged to work with employers to find paid internships. So there's absolutely, you know, no question that we will work with the city on an internship program. We already have one. And so all we have to do is get you included on the handshake, and you may already be included on that with our career services. And we will actively make sure as our civil engineering students make their way through that we prioritize the city engineering internship program. I think that'd be fabulous. We can, we can absolutely do that.
Thank you, Dr. Woodley.
We already have it in place.
Appreciate it.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Is your civil engineering program going on now?
Yes, we, we took our first set of engineering students. We have about ten in the, how much? Ten in the pipeline right now. They just started in their, you know, first, you know, two years. It'll be a while before they get into the engineering program. It's a four-year program.
And that's what I was going to ask. It's the second question. Was it a two or four-year program?
It's a four-year program, yes. It's a baccalaureate degree program. You know, our goal is to be able to have, you know, fifty a year that go through that program and graduate. So we'll have to build up to that, but this $2 million investment and the others that we're working on will really help us get that program a good start.
Are these just civil or are they civil and?
These are, is a civil engineering program. Yeah, so we, so this will make five undergraduate programs. Civil will be the fifth one.
Gotcha. Anybody else have a question for Dr. Woodley? We sure appreciate you coming up and helping. Yes, we look forward to working with you guys and best of luck. All right, let's go to agenda item number five. Discuss renewal of the radio system maintenance and software update agreement Motorola Solutions and the upgrade to the virtualized prime access consoles of D-series multiplier. Gagetti.
Yes, sir. The IT department is requesting approval to renew the radio system maintenance and software update agreement. The services are budgeted and allocated within the IT maintenance and software account. The IT department is requesting approval to upgrade the following radio and dispatch equipment. This is a six-year project. This will replace G-series prime site with Astro virtualized prime site. Also upgrade the AXS dispatch consoles and also the D-series and MC Edge radio sites.
So, simple English, what is all that stuff? Is that our fire and police?
Yes, sir. It's our public safety and then there's some, some billing collections and code enforcement and everybody that uses the radio system. So this is basically a service agreement that they'll repair our existing system right now. The, the rest of it is to upgrade equipment that's going to end of life. So in a few years, all this equipment is not going to be maintainable anymore. So we're kind of trying to preempt that by replacing that equipment in the next year, two, three, and four.
Tony, I assume you have the money and budget, and so what's that amount that we're looking at?
So the, this first year is just going to be software and it's $656,000 roughly? And that's already budgeted and we're going to pay for that. The rest of it, that's where we got with finance and we got with Motorola and we figured out a pay structure that would work for us. So the, the next three years after this year is going to be in the $2 million. And that's because we're replacing servers and hardware, and it includes the software, and then we're going to replace, you know, hardware equipment that needs to be replaced. So, but we're spreading that out over the six-year period so we don't have to take that $6 million hit in one year, right? So that's kind of why we're bringing this now so we don't end up in a place where we're asking for $6 million or $7 million. So we're trying to be a little proactive here.
Trying to look like the total price is 8.6, and is that a guaranteed price?
Yes, that's what we're locking in.
Okay.
And we have Motorola here if you'd like to ask questions about any, about the pay structure or any hardware or anything.
I have a question, just one question. In the transition over the years in doing that, when you're working on different segments of it, you have no downtown downtime or just minimize downtime?
Yeah, that's a, is that, do you know what the downtime?
Yeah. Come on up, introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Tom Henderson with Motorola. When we do these type of transition projects, we will have a project management team that will coordinate with the, the IT team and with dispatch and the agencies to, there will be short downtime, but we'll stage the equipment to try to minimize. We also will work within the hours that we've, you know, the city feels is best to do the cutover as well, but it, it's usually pretty quick, fairly smooth, and plan months in advance as we do this to, to minimize that risk.
Right.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other questions?
I'd like to know, this is the first time you tried to replace this. Have you done it and tried to do it the last two or three years?
We've replaced, well, we just had a, a big upgrade with the Midland. So we've done similar stuff and this last one, I would say fairly well.
Actually, the, what we did is we went from the R4000, we went from the R4000, which was pretty antiquated. They didn't support it anymore. We went to the M-course, what we have right now. So that was about seven years ago that we did that.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Don't look forward to seeing you on the agenda, guys. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Let's move to agenda item number six. Discuss the purchase of Fuses and DFR for the police department. Chief Gurkey.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. This is simply a request to enter and contract and purchase Fuses and Skydio's DFR program. Now, when I bring up the names of these companies, understand they're, they're both owned by Axon. And that's important because everything we do, almost everything we do, is Axon related. So this will integrate seamlessly over without, without worrying about those hiccups and bumps that we, when we try to integrate other softwares into an Axon system or into any other system. So Fuses is, is that software bundle that will allow us to bring in outside camera views. So imagine that we enter into agreement, we, we don't make them, we enter into agreement, say with a convenience store, to allow us to view their, their surveillance cameras on a net needed basis. So fourth and Dixie, there's a robbery. Now, is, how important do you think it is for that officer to be able to know if there's a robbery where someone's pointing a gun at the clerk or someone walked in, grabbed a six pack of beer, and ran out of the store? That's two totally different things, right? Also, imagine a situation where that same person jumps into a white van. Now, before you have the ability to look at cameras, you don't know that he jumped into a white van. I will guarantee you, in my 28 years, I have driven past a suspect as I've headed to a call because I didn't know, right? Now you give that officer the information, the intelligence to, to do his job faster, safer, and more efficiently. So that's the Fuses part of this. The DFR is drone as first responder. So basically what we do with that is we put, there's, there'll be five drones involved here. Two will be stationed at the police department, two at Fire Station Six, and one at Fire Station Three. And we can remotely launch those to critical incidents, to, to major accidents, to major fires, any of those types of things, and they can get on scene before OFR personnel, before OPD personnel, and actually give us that intel back, that information back, so we know how better to, to deal with the situation. The cost of this is $304,000 a year. $304,999.90 a year. This is budgeted. It was approved in the supplemental budget, and I'll take any questions.
Do you have any questions, Chief? Could help you do your job better and help us be safer?
Absolutely.
And have more data for fires and police.
Right.
How can you go wrong with it?
Mayor, I have just one.
Sure.
You have to ask. Definitely on board and catching the bad guys and providing safety for the community.
Sure.
But in Orwellian comment, you're watching after civil liberties just as well.
Sure. I mean, these are not things that are, that we don't have the personnel to, to monitor every camera that we would have access to 24 hours. It's not possible. Right, it's not possible. And we have, we always place policies in place that say this is only for official use, right? You, you have to have a reason to pull these cameras up. You can't just pull them up to kill time and, and for your own morbid curiosity, right?
That's right.
Secondly, so, these are just commercial agreements. They're not, like, you can't, you're not going out, you want my ring doorbell, you want my?
Well, I mean, no, it, we, we, it could devolve to that, but I think at this point, because what Fuses does, it, the, the package we're, we're looking at buying will allow us to bring in 7,000 cameras. Okay? So, I mean, you can't hit every ring doorbell in town for seven, with 7,000 cameras. So if you think about convenience store, if, if you're getting every camera, that's probably five or six or seven cameras, right? So you only have, we only have the ability through this package for 7,000 cameras. So no, it wouldn't be all the ring doorbells.
But just commercials, so only convenience stores or?
I, I think anybody that we could, we, we look at the data and find out, you know, we, we look at where those cameras are in, in our town where we're having the high crime issues and things like that, and we would concentrate on those first, bring those in first.
Any other questions? Chief, thank you. Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven. Discuss Ector County interlokal agreement for a joint drainage improvement master plan. Mr. Tucker.
Good afternoon. What I brought to you is a, it's an interlocal agreement to do a flood master plan study with the county. To my knowledge, this has never been done. So it's kind of unprecedented cooperative effort. I mean, and it makes sense. Rain doesn't fall in the county and fall, or the city. When it rains, most of our flood plains are interconnected. So we've formed an agreement with the county. We've got a consultant on board that is, is ready to get started on this. And I've got representatives from the county. Mr. Avery is here and Mr. Carlyle with Half. They're going to perform the study. And if y'all want to come on up, I believe Half's got a, a short presentation they'd like to show you on exactly what we're looking at.
Sure, absolutely. Come on up, gentlemen.
Thank you all. Good afternoon. So my name's Bryce Carlyle. I'm with Half. I'll just give a quick overview of the project and kind of the scope that we're looking at doing. Let's see if I'm able to click these. Great. So this is kind of the team. My name's Bryce. Like I said, I'm in Lubbock. David Smith's the principal in charge on the project. And, and then we have Andrew Howes, the project manager, and they unfortunately weren't able to be here today, but we're looking forward to get started on the project. So, quick agenda, I'm just going to go over the scope, kind of what we're looking at. These are the six tasks that it's kind of broken out into, but I'll go through them all quickly in a moment. So just a project overview, the goals of the project are really to provide a flood risk assessment for the county and for the city initially, providing the assessment, and then identify and prioritize the areas of concern, and then come up with solutions for those problem areas, and then begin to strategize and work toward solutions and come up with a plan for how to implement those solutions and how to fund them, as well as developing an updated drainage criteria manual. So our approach will be really to start with data collection and public outreach, collect data and, and communicate with the public, move into an existing conditions analysis and a flood risk assessment, and then identify where the problem areas are, begin to identify what the solutions could be for those problem areas, and then plan them out, fund up funding, and then work on the drainage criteria. So task one of, of the project is really the management task, but that includes coordination meetings with, with city staff, with county staff, including city and council, sorry, city council and county commissioners as well. The second part of this is public outreach, so we'll do public workshops and public meetings to gather public info on, input on where flood happens and, excuse me, I'm sorry, and stakeholder meetings so that we can get their input. It also includes the general PM tasks. So moving into kind of the technical part of it, we'll do data collection. So this is really where we gather all the publicly available data, land use, LIDAR, any existing studies that are out there from publicly available data, as well as what the city or county already have on file. And we'll use those to leverage them into our, our study. So any record drawings or flood impact reports will also be gathered. Moving into task three would be the existing conditions analysis. So what we're going to do is develop a rapid assessment model, 2D rain on mesh model, simulate rainfall events, and come up with what hotspots are. And so we'll come up with 30 areas that are identified as the primary flood risk areas, and those will get pushed really into the next task, which is flood mitigation solutions. So out of those 30 areas, we'll, we'll narrow it down to 20, and we'll come up with potential solutions for those. So that's broken down into 12 for the county and eight for the city, and those will include potential impro, we'll look at potential improvements such as structural improvements like detention or channel improvements or culverts, or non-structural such as a flood warning system or, or potentially flood proving or even buyouts could be considered. And once we have those 20 areas with potential solutions, we'll look at prioritizing those solutions and then working toward a planning and funding phase where we can look at developing cost estimates and benefit cost ratios for those. And then the last task here is really develop a drainage criteria manual, updated manual, so that we can kind of get ahead of these problems, equip the city and the county with a updated manual so that we can enforce drainage regulations to make sure that development is not causing additional flood problems for the future. So task six is really just the deliverables for that. So that'll include the, a technical report for the, for the drainage analysis, as well as a CIP report for those proposed projects, a master plan report that summarizes everything, and then as well as the, the drainage criteria manual itself. So overall recap, we expect this to take about two years, so hoping to get started in January, wrap up sometime in January of 2028. So about two years from start to finish. All right, and I'll take any questions here.
My only comment is that I think this is a time of unprecedented cooperation between our county and our city. Proud of all the leaders that are working together to make these communities, this county and city, a better place to live. So I want to thank the county. I thank you guys, Joe, and everyone for getting this, putting this project together. I think it's a great idea. Any questions, Council?
So that's what I understand. The study alone is going to take two years?
No, sir. The, the study, as well as developing the potential solutions and, and the CIP plan and the drainage criteria manual. So all of those deliverables will be accomplished within.
Yeah, but it won't do anything actually for the drainage till after that.
That would, that would be correct. But the, no?
No, that's what I'm trying to understand because, I mean, we all know, we all know where it goes.
So what, what we've also, I've, I spoke with David a little bit on the principle and the, the principle with Half on this, and we're going to identify several hotspots right off the bat, and we're going to start, start developing some plans to, to actually get, so we can, as a city and the county can start working on those while they're developing the rest of the plan.
That's, that makes more sense. That's what I needed to know because, I mean, every time it rains, it rains, and we all know where the water goes, and we know who gets affected and.
And one part of it I'm excited about is the drainage criteria manual. Ours is way outdated. In fact, I haven't really used it for years because it's, it, it needs to be done. And that's an important part of it. That's basically how our consultants design for the drainage. It needs to be done. It's, yeah.
Sounds great.
Any other questions?
Has there been any discussion with Midland? Because the water coming down Fodry goes from Ector into Midland.
What we did do is when we started conversations with the county, it was just in the county. But when we entered the project, we expanded it to include the part of Odessa that's in Midland County. So we will have that.
Well, Bankhead Highway, I think is where Greg hit, I don't, I don't worry about you about, but Bankhead, I know they've built some retention funds. Horton building a bunch of houses back there.
We have.
Yeah.
We're in pretty good shape on that size of town because for the last 20 years or so, we've been concentrating a lot more on retention.
Right.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
We're, we're in pretty good shape there, but it will be in part included instead.
Just kind of place it all down to Montagans Draw and send it to Midland.
That's what's happening now, but it's collecting in, in Don Woods' front yard down there.
It's our friends from Midland.
That's right.
That's right, that's right.
It just, uh, you know, it's curious to hear if 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 there's been attention paid in the last twenty years, I don't remember floods out there like there have been in the last five.
Yeah, we had some floods that hit that area of Midland County south of Bankhead. We had one serious one in the last five years, but that's probably not the only one.
Two that I remember.
Yeah, well, you guys go look at all the concrete that's been put down.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
It all runs that way.
Yep.
We know what's gonna happen, so I I'm excited to get something done.
Okay.
I can't help, I can't help but to ask, but software simulated rainfall to procure your data, what how many inches do you normally program into that?
So it's it's based on statistical observations of rainfall events, so we we gather that data from, it's called Atlas fourteen, which is an agglomeration nationwide of of rainfall statistical data. And so a hundred-year storm, maybe a nine-inch, nine-inch rainfall event, over twenty-four hours.
You'll take worse projections just as well, yeah.
That's right, we'll we'll actually look at multiple storm events, so a one a one-year storm, which is a more frequent event, or all the way up to a a one-hundred-year event, which is
Excellent.
A one percent annual chance, so.
Any more questions? If not, gentlemen, we appreciate your report, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Forward to it. Let's go to agenda number eight, update on the next water line replacement project, Alex.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. The utilities department's here to discuss the new or the next water line replacement project within the utility job order contract. It is in District One, it's down Pearl Street, off of Grandview. Just a little bit about this project, it is from, that water line is from nineteen fifty-seven, it's an eight-inch cast iron line. Currently, it has six line breaks over the last ten years, but the issue that we're having right now is that there are six, with the valve assessment project that we have, we have six valves there that make that line very hard to isolate when we do have some problems with it, so we're gonna start with this one. We're gonna replace two thousand five hundred and sixty-six linear feet of eight-inch cast iron, that will be replaced with PVC. We're also going to be adding five new hydrants in this area due to lack of fire suppression for that air for residents in that area. So, we're gonna be replacing one and adding five new ones. The overall project is gonna add twenty new valves to the project, it's estimated for sixteen weeks, and this project is on the rehab water master plan, so. Go to the next slide, the cost estimate for this project, total with a ten percent contingency is eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two and fifty-six cents. Any questions? It should be December first.
That'll run west from Grandview.
Yes, it will run west, yes, sir.
Are there many houses in there, or is it residential?
Right on Grandview, there is commercial, but then after that, it does turn into residential, yes, sir.
Did we notify the residents?
We will be sending that out, yes, sir.
Any questions, gentlemen? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Let's go to agenda number number nine, update to provide a stormwater program highlighting key ongoing initiatives, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mayor, so I guess we're gonna keep on talking about infrastructure. Um, so, not too long ago, I came to request some funds in order to start doing the scoping for stormwater. So, as you may recall, in two thousand nine, stormwater was established. It wasn't in two thousand and ten that they actually started collecting funds for it, for the first four years. It was mainly just collecting funds, building up the team, and working with GIS in order to, what we'll talk in a little bit about the tier systems. Um, and in between twenty fourteen to twenty sixteen, that's when they started incorporating more of the management aspect of it. And they started building, um, kind of buying all of the equipment that are like the the street sweepers and some of the equipment that we use on our everyday job, we can say. So this was created by the Texas Commission Environmental Quality and Environmental Protection Act in order for us to create this tier system. They're gonna see right now, so basically, we have two categories, which is residential and non-residential. This is depending on how much hard surface you have on your lot, that's how much they're going to charge you. And it's for residential, it's gonna be between a dollar eighty-five to two twenty-five per month, it's a flat fee based on how much you are covered, and we, like I said, we worked really closely with GIS in order to be able to put that data in. So I kind of wanted to give you guys a history for the past five years, just so you can kind of see how much money today we have been collecting through this program. Now we're gonna go more in-depth in where the funds are usually used. Like I said, stormwater is an enterprise fund, so what that means is that it's treated like a business. Every single thing that we're spending has to be related to stormwater. We can't just use it in something that doesn't apply to it, it has to be specifically because we report all of our data to TCQ every single year. So like I mentioned, we already started with our underground drainage scoping. We calculated, we, based on GIS, we have nineteen miles, but we've been finding a lot more right now. So we had put in a window in order to have twenty-five miles, just so we wouldn't have to come back to you guys and do a change order. So we anticipated four things, right now, we've only been working for a month, and we're at twenty-two percent completion for the inlets. And then for piping inspections, we're at eight percent, a lot of that has to do with this. As any project, you're always gonna have unforeseen issues through there. So we have been finding a lot of manholes that have been paved over, so that means that we have to dig them out. And that means a different crew has to come in and clean that up and and expose before we can send cameras in there. And then that means that we have to come and kind of put a temporary cover on that in order for us to not have to dig again, because we're gonna have to come back and raise those manholes to grade level again. We were expecting to have worn an aging infrastructure, that was expected. And like I said, we're finding a lot of new manholes and piping new systems. So, let's go now to this year for what we're projecting to be able to spend. So when I went to council for budget season, I projected this scoping that we were gonna do, and this is, there are two phases. Right now, we're in underground, and then we're gonna go above ground, which would be all the basins and the canals. So, that's where most of our expenditure is going towards, and this is not including anything that we're finding while we're doing this project. So, just to give you a more in detail of where all of these funds are going, so it, when it says personnel, personnel services, supplies, services, maintenance, and other, that is our day-to-day operations, what we usually use in order to be able to just keep on doing the work that we do. The capital outlet, those are the specific projects that we're currently working on. You've heard me talk about the manhole locks that we need to do, those are custom that have to be made. Just so you guys kind of have an idea what the manhole replacement inlets and the manhole locks would cost, they're around twenty-five to fifty thousand per item, so...
Why, why are those custom?
Because of the locks that they have to have. And just because of our system, because if we put plastic ones, they're gonna break them. So they have to be made in order, that's just how they they make them, in order to have a specific lock, so nobody can go into them. They're not as heavy.
Fabricated?
Yes.
Okay, so they're basically some sort of apparatus that's fabricated over the manhole, and the vintage of those manholes could have been created from any time from, let's say, the nineteen forties until present. And so there's no real consistency there, so I think probably what we might do is take a couple pictures
Yes, so you can see.
Of those that were of those locks that we're talking about, and maybe send them out to council just as an FYI.
Yeah, well, I'll just follow up on a correction question, I thought, call me crazy, all cities have the same size manhole covers, do they not?
No, they all have different ones depending on the the use and what they started with, remember, I inherited what was out there. And what they put in was specific, what they wanted to design depending on what was going on in the area. They're not, and I think Monica can explain a little bit more, because I'm not out in the field, what they're looking, they're not all the same. You'll see like some in the school area, how we have very long infrastructure in there that it's a little bit different.
It feels like to me that for fifty grand a pop, you could replace them with something that's consistent.
We have a foundry that's in Crane that make that makes manhole covers and stuff like that. I know y'all probably not talking to them, because they they go out to distributors, but they do sell to cities and stuff, so...
And we can, when we get to that point, we can always talk to, because we haven't gone out for our queues or on any of that. And whatever is in our already, in our system that we can work with.
This is also for manhole reconstruction, so we're talking not just about
Cover itself.
The the top.
The top.
You're talking about the apparatus that goes, the structure that goes all the way down, sometimes it can be ten feet, sometimes it can be twenty feet. I mean, we've got some manholes that are thirty feet long.
Thirty feet.
So, so they're all very unique and different, some are brick, some are failing, go ahead.
Well, they build plastic ones now, and let me just say, they build the plastic ones that are very heavy-duty, and you can buy them locally, you don't have to even go out of here, they have the different links on them, so...
And in some cases, it might be more beneficial to go in and basically shoot them, is that correct?
Yeah.
From top to bottom with what is basically a PVC material that hardens over time, and so then you basically have a shell within the old structure.
And we'll explore all of this once, remember, right now, we're just gathering all of the data, just one-
Uh, I I was able to experience the cameras down in the hole, because I was really worried, it was like a musking gum if it was peed clean to help the waterfall. So make sure you're getting something to keep those manholes, or the lids on there, because you know what I saw down there? That showed me was like ten of those right down in it, no trash, but ten of the manhole covers popping up and flowing down with the water, so make sure we get good locks to help keep that on, so we don't end up looking down and see ten or twelve of them down in the drain.
Fifty thousand a feet.
Yeah, fifty thousand locks.
Um, and this budget does not include two items that we will be talking in the future, which which is Tinglewood Bridge, which would be around a million dollars, and also, Joe just talked about the study with the county, which we would be paying three hundred and seventy-five for that study.
This budget.
Mm-hmm. So, once you include these two additional items, that puts our expenditure for twenty twenty-six to five million. Leaving us for next year, three point six, if we're able to capture, which I think we'll do, we just put it at a very conservative conservative amount, the revenue that we would be collecting, but history has shown that we have been able to collect that.
I have a quick question, bring it on that, is that part of the fee structure discussion?
It it, well, it it is part of the fee structure and the a total fish, a total fee schedule is being prepared. And that will give the council the opportunity to look at the existing fee schedule to determine whether or not a change needs to be made.
Okay.
Okay, so as of right now, these are all the projects that we have identified that will be coming in the near future. So some of them, we're already in the process, which is doing all the assessment, like I said, of the underground and above ground. As you can see, we have already put in some funds in order to start emergency maintenance to them. Just because we know that we're gonna find collapsed systems somewhere out there. We are focusing, uh, you know, it's all gonna come based on a priority list that they're gonna give us, when they give us an assessment, they're gonna give us a cost assessment, and they're gonna give us a priority. And based on that, we also want to make sure that we're focusing and being careful with anything that is close to schools and to parks. So this will just give you the future capital improvement projects that we have. So, just so you guys can have an idea what we're finding, we're finding, we're we're expected to find a lot of sediment in the pipes. So that means that we now had to go into another third party in where before they can even start scoping, they have to remove all of this. So it's it, that's why it takes a little bit longer, we had projected a six months. And so what we have great staff here, we're working with our team here, that they're helping us remove a lot, and it's just I them identifying where it's at, our crew gets out there, cleans it, and then they come back and they scope, and we try to do everything within two weeks, so once they're in a certain area, they can do everything that they need to do in that area. The, this is another example of the YMCA pump station, you guys have probably seen this. I don't know who designed this, but that water ends up going into the community, so we ourselves are in violation, so that's another project that we're going to be fixing and where we're not the ones dumping the water onto the street and into the neighborhoods. So that this pond is is going to have to get digged and lined again in order for it to be more successful location.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
On that YMCA pump station?
Yes.
Is that the one off of University?
Mm-hmm, correct.
What's that middle structure that's right in the middle of what I call a pond?
No fountain.
It's a fountain.
Fountain?
It don't work.
Right, it's a fountain, yeah. And this one is the one that has the pump station, right, that we need to fix? Yeah, so that's-
Out to Twenty-third?
Yeah, yes. But what we're getting, we know, we identified the issue, we're gonna address it. These are, again, aging infrastructure around schools, again, they're one of our priorities, making sure that we have everything to code. So you don't have anybody that's tripping on anything, and then they can get hurt. So, this brings me back to my summary, just, our goal is to make sure that we're protecting not only people, but their properties, and it's not caused by stormwater runoff. We have, as you saw, a whole list of projects that we have to do. Funding will become challenging in the future, just because for the past fifteen years, they have been able to collect all these funds, but now we're in a stage where we're trying to be proactive and fix our infrastructure and mitigate what is out there. So for our working budget for twenty twenty-seven, if projection follows, it would only be one point eight, so as you can see the list, we're obviously going to have to prioritize what's gonna be immediate and just work that way. But just wanted you guys to kind of get a feel of where we're at and how our budget works. Now I'm open for any questions for you guys.
I would say this, for any project is done, need photographs like this, we, if if we ever have to increase stormwater rates, I'd like to explain why with pictures. I mean, I, some of that stuff's terrible looking, but I think it's hard to understand if you can't see it. So please have all of our staff and third parties take pictures.
Yeah, we do.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Craig?
Yeah.
You mentioned something about street sweepers earlier.
We only got one.
No, we got seven, we've only got one driver.
Yes, correct.
That's my whole point. So we've only got one working.
But is that something that you could, could stormwater hire another driver, could, how do we get street sweepers out on the street?
So, stormwater is the one that funds those positions, because it falls part of this management plan. And a lot of it had to do with that we couldn't find people to drive the vehicles, the CDL license. And so we're working with fleet in order to replace tho- those vehicles, so they're non-CDL, and then it'll be a lot easier that anybody can then be able to apply for those, because we can't, we're not paying what other companies-
Plan of action on that?
Yes, there is, the plan of action is-
Timeline on that?
Well, the plan, sure, the the plan of action is, right now, how many do we have in the in the hiring queue?
Oh, there, the positions are posted, so there's five positions that are-
I mean, as soon as we get these positions filled, then we can put bodies in the, we can put people in the
Right, the ones we have.
In the in the existing street sweepers and get them going.
That sounds like chicken and egg, though, you're saying we can't hire CDL drivers because we're not paying enough.
We went up on our rates, so it's-
We went up on our rates a little bit.
Should be able to hire them now.
Did we go up enough to hire a CDL driver?
Yes.
We're getting, we're getting people in the door now, at least at the solid waste side, so I'd anticipate perhaps we should.
Are we still gonna buy non-CDL street sweepers?
That's not the plan to buy, I, I mean, it's the plan to buy non-CDL sweepers. I don't know what the timeline is for that.
Talk about that for a minute. So realistically, let's go ahead and try and get drivers in the vehicles that we have right now. That investment has been made, there's four sitting there, and they're operational, is that right?
Yes.
So I think as time goes on, and it's time to cycle one of those out, then you replace it when it's in, when it's at the end of its useful life, and probably through attrition, the, the job description would then change for that driver, if that makes sense. So, right now, the plan is, let's try and get people hired, so we can get them out on the street.
So in, in Fort Worth, we were made aware by the salesperson that a service vehicle doesn't carry the same CDL requirements.
Yeah, they had, the guy from Lubbock has street sweepers that were, didn't have to have CDL to drive them, he showed us one, and I don't really think about, other than it, it didn't require a CDL driver, have no idea the heaviness, the.
Yeah, it is, it's the weight, it's the slightly, the slightly smaller version that didn't require.
He, he specifically said, and it would probably be something that legal could look into, that didn't matter. It was a service vehicle, so the CDL requirement went out the window.
I, I heard that as well.
Yeah.
And although it, the funds come from stormwater, we're not the ones that, um, manage the hiring for those, so it becomes tricky there.
We, we can make that simple, though. We can get there on, I mean, at the end of the day, if there is a position that's open, and there's budgeted authority there, then we can get it hired.
Sounds like a lot of hiring needs to be simplified.
Well, we're, I, I put, gosh, I put maybe twenty through the queue this morning, so again. Uh, and, and across the board. If you have a budget, and you have budget authority, and you have, if you got the money, then you can hire the people. That's, that's my philosophy on this, that we shouldn't be taking as long as we have at the back. Right. So for, i- if, again, if, if the budget authority is there, it's in the budget, then we just need to, we need to get it out there.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a little clarification, are, are you saying that all service vehicles don't require a CDL?
That is what we were told in.
I was gonna say, a salesman told us that, so I was gonna bring it back to city for more clarity, because I don't know the answer.
Yeah, so I talked to somebody at TML as well, and they stated that the new law, in, in the new law for service, that it, a, a street sweeper is running as a service, therefore, the CDL may not even be required.
Do you know who you talked to?
Um, it was Tim Coe.
Was it someone in the city of Lubbock?
No.
No, it was the representative of Tim Coe.
Okay, well, we can certainly just call a Tim Coe representative and say, hey, what, what law are you referring to? And then we can research it from there.
Yeah, let me, let me look into that.
Okay.
So that would be a great idea to keep these going.
That's right.
And keep what we have and save some cost on new sweepers until we need to replace when it's time.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know what you said. Anything, a one-ton truck and below, you didn't have to have a CDL. Anything above that, like a five-fifty, it was a, that's not even a, a real CDL, it's more of a, you have to go, get your DOT physical and everything, so it's not really a CDL required. But then when you get anything five-fifty and above, it has to have a CDL, so. But the, the trucks you're looking at are one tons, and we should be good to go.
We'll let legal look at that, and we'll let it roll. All right, thank you, is there anything else? Uh, come back to us anyway. All right, thank you, Liz, we appreciate it. All right, Aaron, agenda number ten, discuss one-year extensions on our industrial district contracts.
Sure, uh, I have not had a chance to go over every single industrial, uh, agreement that we have, and there are quite a few out there. My understanding is we have north of, is it sixty? Sixty-two industrial agreements out there. So, uh, with that, I would like to come back at the next council meeting and just say, hey, let's get a one-year extension, so that we can peel back the layers and, and really understand what's going on. I certainly don't wanna let one expire, uh, for, you know, no good reason.
Yeah, Mayor, there's seven that expired December the thirty-first.
Okay, and that's.
And so our thinking was that instead of trying to renegotiate, if we could just get a, a, a policy of a one-year extension, maybe authorize the mayor, you know, do a, any to negotiate, execute extensions. We probably won't have them in, before you on the ninth, but maybe we can have them before the end of the year.
Okay.
And so just kind of authorize you to negotiate and execute.
Okay.
That was the thinking.
Sounds good to me. Thanks, Aaron. Let's go, do you, do we need questions?
Yeah, I got a question. So, if these industrial districts, can we, can we bring them into the city legally? On some of these industrial districts, especially the ones that are real close to the city?
Well, you know, we've got that state law that we don't do, uh.
Yeah, can annex.
Forced annexations.
No.
And so there would have to be some type of request, or some type of, and we, it's probably gonna be an agreement by an agreement issue, but we'll be sure and look at them, and see, especially these seven that are coming up. Uh, is anybody aware that, have they approached the city regarding annexation, have they asked?
I, I haven't heard of any, and the city's really made whole typically on an, an industrial agreement, for instance, you know.
Point, is that we're, we're supposed to, basically taxes in lieu of annexation, or fees in lieu of annexation, we're supposed to be made whole. Uh, that's the, that's the only reason, if you don't do that, you know, then it's like, why, why are you providing the service?
Well, some of these industrial districts sit right on the edge of where we wanna extend out water and sewer, and so, if they're annexed in, now we can do this.
Only if they agree.
Only if they agree, but again, I would give them a chance to take the acceptance. We should be able to give them a chance.
That, you're raising a good point, when you do these industrial districts and these other things, you gotta be careful, uh, you know, like, uh, you're gonna land lock your city, and then you, it's kind of what's happening now, we're having to go east. Uh, you're right, you know, you land lock your city, and there you go.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. Okay, thanks, Aaron.
Looking through the, um, agreements?
Yes, sir.
What's the normal term that you're finding, what do they normally set at, time-wise?
Gosh, I don't know the answer to that, I mean, they vary, they could be a ten-year, they could be a twenty-year, they could be more than that.
They vary.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
They, what, what are the, what are the terms of these agreements usually run? And they vary, but, you know.
Ten, twenty, thirty years?
They can go that far.
Okay. Anybody have any good questions? Bring that up on our December meeting. All right, update on our audit, number eleven, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor. So today I had a, a conversation with Cherry Becker, along with Kayla, um, Finance Director. And Cherry Becker, just to let you know, we brought them on as accountant help, if you will. So this firm is renowned in the state of Texas, probably the leader. All they do is, uh, governmental finance, I don't know that they do anything else. Uh, so they assist cities, uh, who are needing some, well, help with, you know, just third-party. And we've worked with, uh, and we're working with them, and have been, uh, this month, uh, chatted with them today. And they, um, and we were able, today is when all the information was submitted over to, uh, Weaver to finish the audit. So they have their information. Uh, the, really where we're at now is they're gonna review what's called the trial balances, and then, uh, when they review those, then they will be in a position to provide us with a finished audit. Um, so, um, talking with Cherry Becker today, I think that'll probably happen in December. I don't, I like to under-promise and over-deliver, though, so I'd feel more comfortable saying December or January for that finished audit to be presented. In the meantime, uh, twenty-five is really, I'm sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five is underway in the form of new processes that Kayla has instituted. Um, so, um, I feel confident, especially since Weaver has said, and Cherry Becker has said, we are gonna give you every resources possible, necessary to get this thing knocked out in time. So that we meet the, the letter of the law come, come March, for the final audit there. So, that being said, uh, they will also be here on December ninth, Weaver and Cherry Becker. So we'll have representatives from both entities here on the ninth, so that they can get into a more detailed conversation about the specifics of the audit at that time.
We have a plan, once we have that last audit, we start approaching Moody's and Standard and Coors to retain our credit rating.
Uh, that would be the plan, is to get with, at that point, Hilltop Securities, our fund advisor, to set up meetings with Moody's, with Standard and Coors, so that we can have the interview process with each of them, uh, and get a, get a bond rating back.
So I'd like to have those set up, as soon as we have a report on the ninth, and we know, I'd like to go ahead, in other words, I don't wanna, if you wait to set up the meeting, sometimes it might take thirty, sixty, ninety more days, I'd like to get that on the calendar.
Once those are, once those are done, yes, in fact, we'll go ahead and start with, uh, having a conversation with Hilltop to say, hey, we anticipate these being done by date certain, how do we go ahead and get in front of, uh, Moody's and Standard and Coors for that, uh, for that interview, if you will? Um, in addition to that, I wanted to chat a little bit about, um, you know, how do we maybe move forward? Uh, how do we look at things moving forward, so that we don't ever, uh, come to this situation again? And, and Kayla and I were talking about, uh, talked with Mr. Stoker about this as well, about an audit and investment committee. Uh, basically, think about an audit and investment committee as a group that meets every quarter. Uh, these would be, uh, think of it as a compliance committee. Um, these would be folks that are appointed by council, it could be a small committee, if it's five, if it's seven, uh, to give advice to the council, uh, recommendations of audits, internal controls, um, financial reporting, uh, you know, these would be people, uh, that are accounting people, that are CPA people, something like that. That way, that group has an idea of what's happening with our audit process, uh, from just, uh, our controls, our processes, things like that, just an extra set of eyes, if you will, on that specific function that's, that's highly important to this organization. Anyway, something to think about, and if that's the direction you wanna go, you can say, here at this meeting, yeah, let's move forward with that. Uh, and then, um, Norm and I could start working on that process to get that going.
I think I speak for council when I say, the city never wants to be in a position to get in with late audits. There's now, there's now statute that would prevent any tax increase, not that we ever wanna see another one anyway, but, it's just a bad look, and, 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 unless there's, it, it happened, and we don't need to talk about the problem, we need to solve the problem. So from my perspective, if you think these committees would be a tool that finance can use to help keep everything on track, I'm a hundred percent for it.
Very good.
What would be the, the membership of this committee in number?
You know, like I said, it could be anything, it could be five, it could be seven, but certainly you wanna have somebody, uh, with backgrounds in financial reporting, somebody who understands financial processes, uh, accountings, accountants come to mind, CPAs come to mind. Um, but, you know, those are sometimes hard to find, but at the same time, uh, I think, I think it's an important committee, and I can already think of a couple, uh, names right now, who already might serve on other committees that would be, that we could approach about this as well.
Okay.
Um, and in addition to that, you could also even put a couple council members on that committee, I mean, from that perspective.
Sure. Gentlemen, y'all, in agreement?
Absolutely.
I think we agree. I think cause it to happen.
Maybe.
I got, it seems like it exists, though.
The only thing I would add, Mayor, is, uh, the legislature, every session, they're more and more involved in municipal government. I, I don't know how else to put it. Uh, and when you, when you create these committees, I know they're, they get stacked with tho, those professionals, but I would, uh, keep the city attorney's office involved, or some legal representation on that committee, something, because we don't know what will happen the next session of the legislature, and it starts pretty soon. But we've seen what happened in this last session and the session before, and it's just, it's a new, it's a new ballgame, Mayor, with the legislature and municipalities, and we've just gotta recognize that, and we've just gotta be ready for it.
Speaking on that since we're on, on audit and that issue, can you give the council a report on what TML did with regard to our position on that?
Well, to me, this is very e- exciting news and regarding the audit process. Uh, basically, the Texas Municipal League put out a statement, and in that statement, they adopted, uh, the mayor's press release, and sent it out to every other municipality in our state. They also adopted the position of the city of Odessa, that the law is not retroactive, and the audit, uh, only applies to this future audit, which would be due in March. So they adopted the city's position, and then, Mayor, they also adopted the city's position regarding audits, that once the tax rate is set, there's no mechanism to go back and reverse it. And that is what, we, we raised those issues, uh, with the Attorney General, and it, it's just, it's, uh, very important that the Texas Municipal League, related to audits, has adopted the city's position, and I, I just think it's real important going forward. It's a, it's a statement that, uh, it's a, it's a very strong statement.
All right, gentlemen, uh, let's go to agenda number twelve, discuss boards and commission appointment, Norma.
Yes, for, uh, December, we have the ODC board members' terms coming up for David Witten. He has termed out as the, uh, requirement specifies by the bylaws to serve only six years. That's Councilmember Vasquez's appointment, and he wishes to appoint Mike Whitrow for the, the December ninth meeting.
Okay, fantastic.
And for Ronnie Phillips, it's Councilmember Haney's, uh, appointment, and he's willing to serve again if Councilmember Haney wishes to.
Okay. Good, we'll have December ninth appointments then.
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, Gilbert's favorite motion.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further business, I move you adjourned.
The motion to adjourn by Councilman Vasquez, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilman, uh, Haney, all in favor, say aye.